You don't have to say anything before we get started. Are you just here?
The only thing I kinda had on my mind is, I feel like we need to kinda concentrate on trying to get our, city employees a little more pay. I think that's part of the problem that we've got is, you know, there's other jobs that are so easy for them to change over to that, it's hard to keep anybody long enough to keep them trained. I just think, the council needs to consider a raise for the employees to where, we can keep some over just a little bit of time. And I think that would help the situation a lot with, the problems that we're having with the water line breaks and, I mean, when you're having to call people from out of town to fix them, it could go a long way toward, keeping people until they're trained and, and uh, that's just my thought on it. Appreciate you listening.
Where you coming?
This, pardon, this Chris. We spent the money on our downtown median section and to me it looks great. I'm proud of that. But you look right over into a couple buildings with windows knocked out, roofs falling in and all of that. Is there anything the city can do to put pressure on those people that own those buildings?
Yes, at some point, Chris has gone to code enforcement school and when he gets his certification, right now, we're having to pay a company out of Lubbock to come and do any kind of code enforcement. So when he gets his license, he's, he's done a real great job on the animals.
Yes, he is. I commend you.
Not many Roman anymore.
There get a few or a couple in between.
Yeah, then he can concentrate on, on the code enforcement. But the downtown was not the city. You do understand that?
I do understand, but I'll say that, that takes away from the beautiful thing in that one.
Right.
Like the old Ryanstadt building, that's been years that that's fell down. Down here now, the locker pad buildings from the North of Williams out here, the old, two old nursing homes, older stuff.
Yeah, yeah, and now those are substandard structures. And TCG, we, we have a contract with them for five a year and that's how we got the, trailer house. Trailer house. I don't remember her name now. Sharon's trailer house done. And we're working on, we've got three hearings on three properties that will be in October that will be, and if you've noticed, there's several people that have started going ahead and getting theirs, knocked down and taken care of, so, so that's.
I think that part's great.
That's a positive note. It's just, you know.
You know, ask the authorities, Hamlin everybody. It's, it's, you know, it's just a shame when you got a beautiful downtown section, like that, and then you look over there and you go, what's with this?
Yeah.
That's Ryanstadt. That building's been dangerous for years.
Now, which one's Ryanstadt? The one right next to?
Right next to the country store. And I know somebody knocked the front glass out of it. No, we're out of the country store now.
Yeah, well, let's see, what did, I don't remember now what happened to the door. Somebody tried to break in. That's what happened to the country store. We're waiting on, Ken's contacted Benzlinger or one of them, just waiting on somebody to come and fix that, repair it.
Chris?
I'd like to discuss the water problem. Have, have we had any inspections in the past six months on our water tanks?
Yes.
Do you have proof of that? I mean, do you have any of the inspections that we've,
Yeah.
There's one every year. How do you get a hold of those?
They come yearly.
Okay, how do the residents that pay for the water get that report?
Ask for it.
Okay. Have we, so you had the inspections? There was one usually done in February and it should be done by July 1st? The TCEQ?
Okay, you're talking, I'm talking totally different inspection. TCEQ does not inspect tanks.
Okay, but you have to, you have to have a certified person,
Yes.
inspect the tanks and give the information to.
Water tank inspection.
Right, and you do that on a monthly basis?
No. TCEQ, you take samples for TCEQ monthly, yes ma'am, and those have been done.
Okay, and are those public knowledge?
Yeah. We have not had, we've had one bad sample and Jack Brown from Robie, you can't, none of my staff can take them. You have to be a licensed operator to take those.
Correct.
So Jack Brown from Robie comes and takes this all sampling for us.
So you've checked the bacteria, the dissolvents, the pH levels and everything? Okay. Does, I mean, do you report it in the newspaper once a year or every once in a while like we're supposed to?
A consumer confidence report that's required by TCEQ that goes out once a year.
Okay. And um.
So are you wanting the monthly reports?
I, I just wanna receive, I wanna be able to look at something that says, yes, our water's been tested by the correct certified people. I mean, I've heard that you wanna go up on our bills. How can you, talk about doing that when we don't have water? We haven't had water in two months that we could drink. Can we brush our teeth in it? Who knows?
Yes, you can. There've been, chlorine residual has been low. That's totally different than back tea samples coming back bad. We've not had bad back tea samples, which is what you worry about. But because of the, the tank, the ground storage tank had a leak, so I called, the people are out of Joplin, Missouri. Called them to come.
What is your job?
What is my job? I'm the city manager.
Okay, so all of these people are?
Council members.
Okay. Okay.
So.
I'm just wondering, who has the authority to go over all of this with me? I noticed the mayor's not here.
Yeah, I got called out to Lubbock for work, or middling, sorry. Yeah, I mean, I can go over all of it with you. They're all in notebooks. Every report is all in notebooks up there.
Okay. So how can you raise our bills when we don't have the water, the efficient water that we need?
It's kind of a catch 22. The, we have always tried to, we have an elderly population. We have lots of people on fixed incomes. So we have, tried to keep that bill to where everyone could afford it. But there comes a point in time that you have, y'all want infrastructure, but you, you know, but when you start talking about raising a bill, COVID 2020, everything went like this. All the supplies, all the, you know, everything went up.
We all know that.
We remain same.
We all know that.
Yeah, in order to, when you're, when the cost of the, everything we have doubled, and y'all, and the bills remain the same, and I'm talking about me too. I pay a bill here. We all pay a bill here. Yeah. But in order to improve anything, you have to have money to improve.
Okay.
So we're giving our water from Snyder's, is that correct?
Correct, yes ma'am.
So every time we have a water line break along the path, that costs us money, is that correct?
Costs the city.
So you are passing that cost on to the consumers, is that correct?
Well, yes and no. I mean, it's, our bill, the, our city of Rotan bill, when I started doing analogies, every time we start talking about rates, I do analogies of all the surrounding within, you know, kind of our size. And I do Snyder's because they are our provider. And us in Robie are way down here. Because they're the same way. They try to keep things low for the citizens. Everybody else was more than thirty dollars above us. Everybody was over a hundred for a minimum water bill when we were at seventy. So.
Okay, do we have, have we used the grant for the new water?
Yeah, they're almost finished.
Where's the tank?
There's no tank.
Okay.
It's just lines.
Okay, the lines.
Yeah, it's replacement of transmission lines.
Okay, so my concern is when we do have a water break, the notification to the public? Social media? Double Mountain is great about notifying the public. We have a lot of people that do not have social media. How are they being informed?
That now, that's a, an operator question. That's a Jack Brown question. He does what is required of him by TCEQ. And like I said, this man is doing it out by the, out of the kindness of his heart, cause he is not, he's not, I've talked to them, everybody's willing to pay him for his services.
So why is it the operator's responsibility and not the city managers?
Because he is licensed, I'm not licensed by TCEQ.
But he tells you.
No, he is the one that reports those.
What about these city people that don't have the social media? That's what I'm talking about.
I understand that ma'am, but he does what he is required. I, you know, what, I can't go door to door.
Well, maybe you should.
I don't know what the answer is.
Look at these little people. They're out of water. They're out of water for hours on end. Y'all should at least provide them with bottled water.
And, and we do occasionally. I mean, we try to, but we're in Rotan. You get, cases of bottled water out here and then you have, you, there's six crates full of water and you come back the next morning and there's like one left. Because people take. They come when we're not here and they take.
Maybe it should be distributed inside. Would that be a solution?
I don't know, Jeannie. I don't know where we'd put six pallets of water.
Well.
Well, I'm here about the, the notification issues, okay?
Yes.
Very simple fix to that. I did this at my house in Lapan. When we, they have a water issue, there's a phone notification. There's also a grant made to cover that, to where you know what's going on. And I operate the water house here in town and I never know until I spotted on Facebook or somebody calls me and tells me. Somebody not associated with the city. It's too simple to do. Social media, you don't have to have. I bet you all the old people in here's got a cellphone. Pretty simple. It's pretty simple to get into. I investigated it. There's several different companies that do it. You can also get funding to run it. So.
Yeah.
At some point, we've gotta step into the 21st century.
I did look into that and it's been probably seven, eight years ago. Problem is, we ha, in our databank, our, the new program we're going to has that ability, where I can say, like, the ones in town, that doesn't affect those out, I can separate those out and send out notices or phone notifications. I don't have numbers for ninety percent of the people, cause everybody's gone to a cellphone. What I've got in the system is a landline.
You could do, you could do a three month signup period. That'd be fairly easy. Everybody gets a, everybody gets a, it's a bill.
When we talked about it years ago, we printed it on the back asking for updated numbers and got like five or sponsors.
So we did it once and it didn't function then. So we're at a, we are now at an emergency situation. And we're not looking at it and going, hey, maybe we should pull this off. At this point, we should go, hey, let's do this. Let's figure out what we gotta do. One of the, one of the city councilmen could probably look that up, figure that out, present it at some point. It shouldn't have to be you. Doesn't have to always be you. The control issue should be spread amongst the city council. Somebody should be able to look that up, go, we can do this, and act as an agent for the city to get that functioning in. It'd be that, it's that simple? It's not really hard. It really is.
It is, but it's, it is, but it isn't, you know.
So, so we're just not gonna do anything.
Oh, I didn't say that.
So we're gonna do the minimum, which the minimum is CTECQ, allows Jack Brown to, to put out a notice out into the ether. And then everybody in here goes to turn their tap on and there's no water. Nobody knows it. Nobody knows what the quality is. Nobody knows what the situation is. So we just gonna sit on our hands and nobody's gonna say, hey, look, let's go take this by the horns and do it. Am I missing something there? Is there not any conversation amongst the city council that says, hey, look, we've got an emergency here? How do we, how do we notify our citizens, our customers?
Volunteers? I love volunteers. I'll supply all the stuff for anybody to go and try to get all this information. It would be great. But.
So.
You're relying on the public to do this and not our city employees and council?
Our city employees. I, I wish that those that complain about the guys would follow them around.
I do. I watch them go by my house. Every few minutes, they go by the house. They, they, I bet they, they're, they've gotten to the warehouse and they're back over here again. I could video them. Every day, how many times they go by my house? I don't know how they get any water there.
They, they're going for parts. You can't fix.
And you know what else? If, if that's the case, the guys that come read our meters, they could go knock on our door and say, do you have an updated phone number? Because they claim they go by everybody's house to read their water meters, go knock on those people's houses and say.
Carla, you said a minute ago that you have a new system being implemented that will have the capability of notifying people of.
Yes.
When is that supposed to be implemented?
I'm hoping October 1.
This year?
With our new year.
And that has a notification system to cell phones?
Yes, they have, they have that capability to where I can, like, cause we have, we have our transmission line, we have our, our city limit citizens, then we have three branches of DPNR. We have east, north, and then there's another branch off of that, that if we have an isolated incident in one of those, as of right now, I'd have to go to everyone.
Correct.
But if we can get all of that in, then it would be, you know, I don't have to call you. It's not gonna call you when I have a, a problem.
So we could send out a news blast saying everybody needs to sign up their cellphone, register it with the city so that we can get on this notification system?
Yes. Yes, great.
What about notifying them on our, down here on the marquee?
The marquee is down.
It's been down for how long?
So, since that storm.
Jeannie, is it not fixable?
Well, Paul finally came, Paul Dean, the one that does all the bank stuff, he came last week. Actually, his son came. Paul came and then his son came and he's changed out the stuff, but it's still not communicating. So now they gotta figure out.
Are we still boiling our water?
Yes.
So as of yesterday, it was eight weeks. And no water is being supplied.
That's what I keep saying. There, there are no bad back tea samples. It's because of the tank repair. Because when that tank repair happened, three times before it was fixed properly, TCEQ said you have to have residuals for, I don't even remember what they told Jack, because again, I'm not an operator and I don't remember all the things that they told him. But he has to turn in residual samples, residual readings for chlorine for X amount of days before they will lift it.
We can put a clear glass of water and there's particles in it. That's not safe to drink.
I don't know, Jeannie. I drink it. I've never stopped drinking it, so I don't, I don't know.
Are we actively assisting one of the employees to help them get the certification?
Yes, yes. Austin and Dean went to water school and Bryson and Als went to sewer. And we're just waiting on testing. We will have, then have what our requirement is for a class D sewer. And then we have to have two class C operators, so once Austin gets his, then hopefully the next school we can reverse and send, you know, I've given them all the opportunity. I know it's been out there that, I wouldn't allow them to get their education and that is incorrect. We've always, any employee that wants to get a license, the city pays for their, all of it. They're not out of pocket anything for them. And since I've been crucified so much over this, I'm probably going in November to get.
Well, then I'm done now. The, the Carla crucified, I'm over that.
I didn't say by you.
No, but that's, oh, I got a text message that says different from you. It's, this is, this is ridiculous that you can't have a meeting that doesn't have emotion built into it. And your emotions run a whole lot of these issues.
Well.
So I'll deal with it on my own terms.
Have a good day.
So we talked about the notification. We talked about the water line break. What about the water towers itself? Do we not need a new water tower and how do we go about getting one?
Well, that's a, that's another. It all comes back to this. Now, the, we do have the rehab starting Monday. As a matter of fact, that, they called me yesterday and they will be here Monday. They're starting on the DPNR stand pipe and then they will do the north tower. And the south tower will be last because it has containment. They'll have to.
So they're just going to repair them? We're not even gonna consider having a brand new one? And why is that? I understand money, but there's the ways, the bond issues.
Grants.
Grants.
That we have.
Yeah, the grants are, grants are not a drop in the bucket of those unfortunately. The TCBG grant is, CDVG, sorry, grant is, they have upped it, but it still doesn't touch a water tower.
Patching the old towers is not really, it's just like a temporary fix. We really need a new tower. Bring it to the people. Bring it to the people. Come on. That's what our council's for. Bring it to the people.
Yeah, and also on the DPNR, you know, Jack Brown's suggestion was to get rid of DPNR, have someone else come run that.
Now, they got dealt on us basically.
Yes, yes. We took them in so all of those people would not be without water.
Right.
And.
No, it's a, it's a, takes a lot of the city, it's always time.
Yeah, cause that's lots and lots of miles of line. You know that, Gerald.
Oh, yeah, yeah. You know, instead of being able to read all the town leaders in a few days, you're looking at a couple of weeks to get them all read out on the CPNR lines.
I know that Norville Kennedy has offered his services as a grant writer. Are we utilizing him?
He offered to EDC. He, Norville has not contacted me. I don't know.
Would it be a view to maybe contacting him and asking him to?
Cause he told me he had, he would offer it to the city as well. Okay, well, see, I've been told that. Yeah, we've got, our, our CPI is the one who does all of our grants and they've got feelers out all of the time on different, you know, different things that would benefit us, so.
One of those boil water notice wasn't that called the QV station? That did two phone calls.
That, again, that's a Jack, that's a Jack Brown question, not.
Then when they put pressure on, Jack attends that.
But Jack's doing it for free, so, you know, how do you, how do you, you know, I mean, he does what's required and he did.
They do their job for free, but they do it.
He did call, he did call, when this first started, when the, the first time the tower went down, or the stand pipe, not stand pipe, ground storage, when it went down, when it developed the leak, he did call them then. And whether or not they were.
My point is saying, it's too much trouble trying to get every, call everybody and all of that. Ninety-nine percent of people listen to the news. That would just take, take a two phone call. That wouldn't take up that much.
Like I said, according to Jack, he did notify them.
I've never seen, I've never seen a Rotan, I watch both stations every day. I've never seen one from Rotan on there. I see everybody else.
Can I say something on that one?
Absolutely.
Um, I know that I had talked to Jack at one point and he did report it to KTexas or KTab. And like you said, it never showed up on it, but we have no control over what they do put in their content. You know, he can only do what he is supposed to do on that. Um, you know, I don't know what we could do on that part of it. If they're notified and they don't say anything about it or anything. I know my mom said that she didn't see anything either and she watches it every day. So, you know, we have no control over what they do actually report. But.
Well, I would like to ask the council, would it benefit for us to pay Jack Brown instead of volunteer? That way we could expect a little bit more from him?
He won't accept payment. We've tried.
From what I understand, Jack is also doing Roscoe.
Yeah, I was speaking to say, he's helping us in Roscoe in here.
Roscoe, Robie in here. The man literally never sleeps.
Well, is there someone else that we could pay other than Jack Brown? Like, who does it for Hamlin? Who does it for Aspromot?
Well, they're, they're employees, yeah.
Well, is there someone that we could hire, that y'all could hire? Excuse me.
Well, that's, that's what they're doing with the employees, is getting them certified. Unless they can one of them certify.
I understand that.
Then we'll have somebody in place that can.
How long is that gonna take?
Well, the schooling. How much schooling it takes.
But until that we get that, is what I'm speaking of.
Carla, do you know when the testing is for these guys?
Um, Austin should be able to test pretty quickly. They, when they went to the May School, they were supposed to have, there's a new resiliency course to our course that they were, it was supposed to have been covered in that course, but it was not. So now he's got to take that and then he can test. But every time we tried to schedule him for that class, we've had breaks. So.
So are the classes online or is it someplace?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
And how frequently do they offer those classes?
Um, it depends on which, if you go in person, online, live person, or at your own pace.
So at your own pace, could he do it at any time?
Yes.
And how frequently can they, can they test for this? If they take the course?
Yeah, if they take the test, are you talking about like if they take it and fail?
Right.
Okay, if, if they take it and fail, my understanding, I would have to clarify that again. My understanding is they can take it again within, two days, I think, is what they said.
Does it cost them any money to take the test?
It does not cost them, no. The city pays for all of it.
Okay, okay. And how much is that? Do you know, just offhand?
Roughly, the, if they go to a TWU A supported, it's like five hundred-ish, five hundred, five fifty?
Class?
Yes, for the class plus, yeah, plus their food and all of that. And then a hundred and ten for the TCEQ licensing. And then I think it's between thirty-five and fifty every time they test. And that is at Sweetwater. We are fortunate, you can go to, to TSDC in Sweetwater to test there. They have a, they only offer it certain times, but you can take your test there. So you don't have, you just have to drive to Abilene. Pre-COVID, you took your, you went through the school, half a day, the last day was half a day and then the other half was you tested for whatever you went for. But they took that out and haven't offered it again after.
It's a shame.
Yeah.
Yeah.
COVID's really, it, it did a number on a lot of things.
A lot of things.
Okay, let's move on.
What about the, the roads? The, have we repaired or replaced the two manhole covers yet?
Oh, there's way more than two.
Well, I know of two on a main road. So have we replaced those yet?
That company has not. I spoke with another representative yesterday and.
What company or who?
Sewer. The, the, Paul Sewer, whatever they were. They're the ones that broke them all. And those aren't cheap either.
The liability of a resident in Rotan is under the Emery, the city?
It's under, it's actually under Atmos at the moment, cause Atmos was, Atmos was the contractor. All these guys were subs for Atmos.
And the roads, when we're gonna get those repaired? Some of them you can't even drop off.
As soon as they can. That's the priority is water coming in, sewer going out, then everything else just kinda falls into place when they.
Why isn't the council saying anything?
I don't know. Cause they paid me too, I guess. I don't know.
I mean, you're supposed to be just as involved in all of this, and especially this meeting. You might have another of you or can add something to something.
Okay, let's move on.
I'm sorry?
We're gonna move on.
Okay. I'll leave.
Okay, a motion to approve the minutes. I'm Scott, second. Joy, calling favorite.
Okay, water, as everybody knows, we've had several leaks and they're, they're working on the, the last one at the. they're working on the, the last one at the, out at the ground storage. It, they got it repaired, they got a leak repaired, then it blew out on the other side of that repair. So that's when, uh, we called in Finco to, to help, help the guys, they were exhausted. And so, so far that's doing well, it's, it's held. The contractors are now to a punch list. They, they were tying in, they're tying in the last of the lines, the new, the new parts, they're tying all of those.
You're talking about white water?
White water, yes.
Okay, my, um, my question, um, with all the stuff that has been involved with the leaks and everything, everything is fixed now, right?
There is one that was called in the day before yesterday that's on the other side of the blinking light at Hobbs that they've got to have help with. The backhoe is down again, a seal blew on the arm. So, waiting on that to be repaired again, just getting to the point.
Okay, so we can't do the testing or anything until after that's repaired or, well, that's not the right way to say it. I guess it goes to another question, the, um, with the testing that Jack is doing and everything, has anybody been sent back that we're clear on stuff? I know we're still under boil water notice right now, but.
That's because of residuals, not bad backteas.
No, I understand that. I understand that.
You're saying is how do we get off the boil water notice?
Basically, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean.
Well, that's what I was saying earlier, I don't know. Jack has to turn, he has to turn in residuals to TCEQ, like three, it's one side a day normally, but because of the back, because of the, uh, ground storage going down, they told him he has to do, and I'd be lying if I told you the number because I don't recall what number. But he has to do more than one daily for X amount of time and get those numbers to them before they will lift the boil water notice, or before they'll allow him to lift the boil water notice.
Okay, we don't have any kind of timeframe or anything on what we're going to be able to do on that?
No, I would have to get specifics from Jack and see.
Okay.
Sewer?
Uh, sewer's still trying to get answers on the lids that were broken. We did finally get all of the, you know, we were having issues west, all of the west part of town. And for the last two, three weeks, those have not been, have not been backing up. So I think they finally maybe got all that through. There was, you would not believe the stuff that they pulled out of that sewer. That is unreal.
Did it mess up the sewer machine?
Yes, yes. I got the parts back, uh, Lloyd picked those up.
Actually.
Last Thursday.
What about that back trunk?
Back in operation Friday.
The back trunk working now?
Yes. Our sewer machine is, it's, doesn't have much power.
It needs to be replaced badly.
Yeah, yeah, Jack brought the one, in fact, he let us borrow Robys for a while, but we had to get, he had to bring Roscoe's to get all that to flush through. Neither one of ours or Roby's, either one had the power to get it to come on down.
Don't they use some kind of detergent you could put in that sewer?
Well, there's, it, you put it down the manholes, but yes, and they were doing that too.
Yeah, I put some down dishwashing soap in there, it break the grease.
The streets?
Carlos, uh, what was that, last week, I believe, he said they, they've been working twelves and he hadn't had a chance to, and I got the part he needed for the street patcher, so. He said as soon as they, they were able to, that they would be back.
Do we have any base of that?
The base, no, I got to get some more base ordered, but everything for the street patcher is there.
There.
Um, question on that, um, we brought up and approved, um, as far as the bond for the streets, have we done anything on that? Are we going to do a bond election or?
Well, that'll be in November twenty-sixth. So we need to get, there's just a whole plethora of things we've got to do before then.
Are you still working towards getting all that stuff done for whatever has to be done?
Jack was going to email me, they did a, they did one at Roscoe, um, I think he said two years ago. And the cost of, he had all of the cost analysis and all of that and he was going to get that to me. So we would have something to go by as to kind of what, what we were looking at cost wise and what kind of a bond we need to go, you know.
Grid?
My turn? Well, we got, uh, we got the building that's ready, we just need electricity. You get it foamed up and then, um, the AC unit's what we're going to, y'all, y'all approve that. And then, uh, I need two ceiling fans and lights and then be ready to go. I'm at twenty-nine, oh, at this point.
Twenty-nine, about.
And then, uh, the other deal is the, the truck, the, I took the mechanic at Sweetwater, it's the, uh, turbo's going out on it. And if y'all see me downtown, it's like I'm a skeet spraying, but it's, it's burning oil like three quarts a week. And then the, the AC that went out on it, the compressor, so we got to do something about that. It's, it's, he, he said it could go out any time, so, just.
How much is that turbo cost to get fixed, do you know?
He said around six or seven, yeah, ones they have to tear into it.
Thousand.
Thousand, yeah.
About a thousand?
No, six or seven thousand.
Six or seven thousand, okay.
But it's burning oil as well.
It's got over two hundred some thousand miles on it.
I have a call in to Snyder, uh, I was hoping he'd have a figure for me before the meeting, but I did not. I talked to Eli and they have, uh, two thousand nine? Nine or ten, gas meter, or gas powered, uh, basically the same setup as ours, just a little nicer, a little newer. Uh, and there, they were, they normally do theirs through auction, but he said he would give us first, uh, first shot at it. He's going to get it appraised and then give us a figure for, to replace that vehicle and then we would.
Now, would that just be the truck or the trucked box or?
That's everything.
Okay.
That's out the door. Those boxes are somewhere around twenty thousand themselves and, um, like I said, I was hoping to have that since that turbo's, he's been babying it.
Sound like a jet engine going off. It whistles when you.
Yeah.
Getting louder and louder.
The dogs know the whistle now.
Yeah, they, they, what they see before I see them, they're already running a block down the road. They hear the trucks coming, like the ice cream man. But I did get some bids on the electric, there's two of them on there. One of them's out here in town and the other one's went here in Stanford.
Yeah, on the electric, uh, R-six, which is, which is Rex Riley, he bid thirty-five hundred and that's just labor, correct? That's what, uh, supplying all of the supplies. Uh, four C, which is Ronaldo, and I don't know if y'all know him or not. He does the courthouse and the hospital, I think he does something at the hospital.
He's doing work at the school, he's done work, I think at the hospital, um, the school of Roby. Um, he does the courthouse and he does work full time up at the, um, chipmunk thing.
Yeah, and he is licensed.
He is licensed, he is bonded, he, yes.
And what was his bid? This was for everything.
Yeah, his bid, he sent three bids yesterday and he was going to call me and explain the difference in them.
What's the highest on there?
But I don't know what they are. The highest one was thirty-four, thirty-three.
And that's with everything, the materials and the labor?
And this, the other one was, uh, thirty-five hundred with no material.
As soon as we get that in, he can start this weekend. The foam guy, he said as soon as, and he, he has sixteen hundred for the, eleven hundred for the building and then five hundred for the little office, he'd do it all, uh, for what, sixteen hundred?
Yeah.
And I thought that was.
Sixteen, sixteen, five, sixteen for the office building and eleven hundred for the, uh, facility. Uh, and who is that? New Beginnings?
New Beginning, he's one of, he was mine over there when I was in Hamlin.
Isaac bidding that?
Four, four C will do the cold name for thirty-four. That what you said?
I think we just do that.
Complete.
That's what I was thinking, yeah, he'd do it all for that.
Would you have to have a vote to do that?
Plugs and lights, I imagine, nothing serious.
Yeah, he, he put everything down when he was kind of furnished, uh, all on that, on your, uh.
There's, let's see.
You're good.
Yeah, that's all the electric, like I said, you know, he's local. The other guy's from Hamlin, but everybody knows, uh, four C, they see his pickup running around and he's, you know, easy enough to get a hold of. Uh, new, the foam guy, Chris and I had talked about just getting, um, the batted insulation for that, but I don't think we can touch the five sixteen because you'd have, if you put the batted insulation, then you have to put some kind of covering over the tuber cores.
Well, and then the.
It's better to foam it.
The foam is going to seal up any cracks or holes.
I, I mean, that's real reasonable.
And then on the air conditioning, Pritchard Services had, uh.
Thank you all for coming.
Put in a bid of forty-eight hundred for mini split, a three ton mini split. And I had Paul Henson come and look at it and he said that it didn't, it didn't need a three ton, but he thought we would be much better served to get two units, one for each end, window units that do heating and cooling.
And to put two ceiling fans up where it can circulate. Because I didn't put the walls, the walls are not here. That way they could cool the whole thing, you know, whole building. I didn't put them all at the top.
You're going to foam it inside the building?
Yes.
Where the kennel part are, the, the, all of it will be fully foamed except where the dogs are and it'll be just, what'd you say, above the cage or?
Yeah, about just high, because where they're at, because they'll all scratch it off.
Yeah, yeah. If y'all haven't been down there to look, I, I, y'all need to go look, it's, it's very nice.
Yeah.
And they have.
I took him to there.
There's a place they can go out back now, you know, they're not confined to inside the building. There's a, they can go outside and, uh, still be contained, so.
It's real, it's real nice, though. Especially some of these dogs, both that, I think they, they don't want to leave.
Well, he had, he had, he, one morning he came in, he said, well, I had, I had a prisoner breakout and I said, oh, he didn't, what was it, the next day or that afternoon?
He was back in and back in, I don't know how he got back in.
Yeah, he said, well, he turned himself back in, he was back in the kennel. Yes, y'all want us to just carry on with that? Yeah. Uh, AEP came yesterday and they don't set, well, they do set poles, but they're eight weeks out on any kind of setting a pole. So I'm going to talk to Big Country and see if they'd be willing to set that pole down there. So that's all we like is getting electricity to it. And they said they also don't do, uh, guard lights, so the electrician will have to do that also.
Cemetery?
Cemetery, if we can get those helicopter weeds to quit growing, we'll be fine. He, he mowed the last, when did he finish, last Tuesday?
Yeah, that I don't know.
But the time before, he mowed and literally the next day I went out there.
Next day it was unreal.
I went out there and I called him, I said, James, did you mow? He said, yes, ma'am, I did. And I said, well, I thought you did, but there's helicopter weeds this tall, they were already, you know, six inches tall. Had a few graves settling, of course, that's to be expected with that big rain, but.
Yeah.
When, uh, they come and dig a grave, he tries to run through, Joe tries to run through the cemetery and, uh, take dirt to anything that has settled out and fill it.
Trash?
That's going along just peachy.
Fire department?
Fire department, they had nine calls in July, two wrecks on fifty-seven, two wrecks on seventy, camper tire, camper trailer tire on fire on fifty-seven, helped with a control burn in Rotan, gas meter mowed over by Tex Dot on one eighty, wreck in Rotan and hay bales on fire south of Rotan.
Municipal court?
Municipal court, she has now had fourteen tickets filed thanks to Chris, uh, and then two small claims.
So that's working. Library?
Library, they started on Tuesday mornings at nine, a group of ladies have started a quilting class. So, anyone interested in that? Show up at nine o'clock on Tuesdays, they have a ball from one gather.
City park?
City park, I haven't had any complaints on it. Um, just for y'all's information, Harold is back in the hospital. Uh, he was borderline septic again. He said they're, they're trying to get his white blood cell up so they can do the actual surgery. They still haven't removed his appendix, so. But he does have, his, his grandson is taking care of his mowing stuff, so he has kept up with that.
Personnel?
Y'all heard everything I had to report on the guys, they're, they're doing a, they're doing a great job.
Yeah.
Those with complaints, I would ask that they follow them around.
Don't follow them, get in the pickup with them.
Yeah.
We were up to the shade park checking on the mulch and stuff to go, or the swing going on it or some kind of material.
Yeah.
Don't find nothing yet.
Yeah, I think the economic development is going to try to help with that, getting that back in there. Sine is looking at, at options for us, so.
Major report?
Okay, y'all looked at the bills, there was, uh, nothing extraordinary to report, that Finco bill was in there for them coming to help. And I was talking to Jack about that and he said they were phenomenal that day. They did, they called Whitewater, they didn't understand why Whitewater hadn't gone ahead and they put the, the valves up to there, but they didn't connect while they had the hole open. So they didn't understand that, so they called them. Finco, Finco did, the head guy for Finco called and they came. He said, while we've got this hole open, why don't y'all come and connect? So they came and did all of that while they were in there, so that saved us, you know, two days of work.
Just to open the valve there.
I make a motion.
Second.
Department.
Go in favor. Late change ordinance, twenty twenty-five, seven eighty.
Before we go on, were we going to go ahead and do these?
Yeah.
Okay, I just, I wanted to make sure I heard right. So before we get out of here, I'll get a few of those.
Okay.
Or is that in here?
Cost you a dollar a sheet?
It's not in there.
No, it's not in there.
Okay.
Do you know what Lloyd said? Smarty pants, cost you a dollar a sheet.
Okay, can you scan it and email it to me then?
Nope, that was a two-dollar sheet.
Take it out of my salary. There, how do you like that one?
Yes.
I'll let money you're getting for this.
Are you comfortable with the ACs? Is it going into the wall or...
I, I am. I think it'll be okay.
Yeah, it was actually his suggestion before.
I like the mini split. I mean, it's, I think it's more economical.
I just trying, cost-wise, I was trying to keep it.
Well, it's cheaper. Not always good sometimes. All right.
So what do we got to do as ordinance?
Look through and I would like to, since these aren't going into effect since, until September, I would like for this to be, I mean, until October one, I would like this to be the first reading since it is in ordinance form. And there are some other issues in there that are addressed.
Okay.
Which one being, um, I've had problems in the past with people coming and turning services on or saying they had the right to when they actually did not have the right to. And there's a, uh...
Now, what do you mean turning services on?
Like come in and turn services on that you come in and it's not your property, but you want to turn water services on at, at an address. And the owner does not want you to have those services.
Okay.
See what I'm saying? So there is one in, there is a paragraph in there that makes them show me that they have the right to have services there. Because we have had several squatters in the last little bit.
Oh, okay, now, now I'm beginning to understand. Yes.
Is that in here?
Yes, it's on page three, number two.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
And given, we may want to wait until we talk to Republic because we may want to add...
Something different on that?
Add to the commercial or to the...
Yeah.
Cost on trash service.
We can read this. We can just move along from this. We're just going, this is just the first reading, so...
Yeah, you got to approve the first reading, though.
Then a motion.
So let's, let's wait until we do Republic.
Okay.
And then...
You're just saying come back to this after we hear from Republic?
Come back, yes, come back to this.
Actually, why don't we do Republic and get, so they can...
Yeah.
Get back on the road. Get back on the road.
Can't you see the joy in their faces?
Yeah, I've seen them.
I'm in charge over here, I've, I've never felt this before. I'm not leaving this desk.
I'm sure Carla would like, would, would be more than happy to let you have it.
Yes, and James has been in the city specter, so I could actually leave and let him sit there.
I was just saying, are you going to take the day off when we get down and let him have it?
That's what I was eluding to, is he should have let him have it from seven o'clock.
So do we need to go to Republic then?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, yeah, this is, y'all will, this...
Is that what we're going to?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, so it's been, hard to believe, been five years already. We came here, came here in twenty twenty when we had an acquisition, but, uh, so it's time to, time to do a, hopefully do a contract extension with us. We hope that we've, uh, we hope we've earned your business. Um, I think we, I think we've done a pretty good job over the years being here and, uh, we tend to check in with Carla quite a bit. I know James is here, James is at least out here monthly checking in on all the cities that we have out this way. So we, we feel like, uh, we've got a good thing going and we, we just hope to continue it for the next five, for the next five. Uh, this one does come with a little bit of an increase. It's been more than ten years since a rate increase on trash has come to Row ten. So like anything else, not regurgitating what's already been said this morning, but I mean, everything has gone, especially in ten years, everything has gone up. Uh, so, but the rates are still extremely competitive with what's going on around here. We, you know, this is, city government is what I and James do all day long. We do RFPs quite often. You know, try to avoid them by just making, uh, making good relationships and doing a good job and, and just kind of, kind of having, uh, good open dialogue with those cities so that we just earn the business and, and kind of move on down the road. And that's kind of what we're hoping to do here. We hope, we hope that we've earned your business. And we also hope, and I know you already do, that the council understands that we've had just an extreme amount of, uh, expenses going up. Everything that you touch in any business has gone up, especially in ten years, so, I don't think the, I don't think the increase is, is probably not anything that hasn't been discussed with probably any vendor that you have, so... I'd love to answer any questions that you have. We certainly want to be open and transparent and anything that you would like to ask me and James, I'd love to answer it for you. We have been working with Carla for a little while on this and, uh, so we hope that we've put together something good that the council would appreciate.
What's the difference between a one-point-five and a three yard?
Double size.
Tell me.
One-point-five yard are the flat ones, the little ones, and the slant is the three.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I would make sure.
Yeah, that's the yards of garbage, yards of, that it'll hold.
And there's no changing, there's no proposals of changing anything. It seems like everything has been working, so we're not, there's nothing that's going to be changing. We just hope to, hope to continue with you for five more.
Yeah, the, and the thing I like about this, this rate sheet, is they're, they're, they're putting it on the line. I've never had this in a garbage contract where they guarantee the rates.
Yeah.
So that, that allows you and Carla to budget your solid waste from the time this contract starts till the very end. We're never going to be in here asking you for anything else. Everything is right there in writing. It's very easy. Try to be a good partner with the city. Y'all have been great partners with us, for sure.
Yeah, and I did a little cost analysis and I did not write it down and I apparently threw my tape away, but if you go back to two thousand fifteen, which was our last increase, or our last, when our contract began with KWS, and you do just a three percent increase per year, we would be well over seventeen dollars today. And we're not looking at seventeen until twenty twenty-nine.
Yeah, so by the time this contract, thank you, Carl. By the time this contract is up, is, you would just now, the rate would just now be where it would have been today if we would have done price increases every single year like a lot of vendors do, right? Especially when you consider three and a half years of inflation being seven plus. So you'd have, you know, twenty, twenty-some odd percent increases just over those three. So, um, you know, Carla, Carla's right, she hit the nail on the head. It's, uh, it's, it's actually a pretty, pretty good spot to be in.
This residential, that ninety-six gallon cart, that's not those?
No, well, it, that's the way they have it on the bill because it's per residence, but they're not going to change, it's still going to be shared steel.
Still, okay, no, okay.
Do y'all have somebody that checks the dumpsters, like they're riding out at the bottom?
So no, we don't, but if you'll report it, if it gets reported to Carla, she'll put a work order in, we'll replace it. Broken lids, any broken lids, any rotted out, it's going to happen over time. Any damage, anything like that, the drivers, they try to look at it, but I'll be honest with you, they don't notice the bottom of the container. Every once in a while, they'll report a lid, but they're not going to see the bottom, especially if they're here during the dark times in the mornings, they're not going to see it.
Well, the driver, we got here, he, he's good, no luck.
You have one of the best, for sure.
He is.
So yeah, if anybody lets Carla know, we'll, we'll get those replaced. And of course, there's no charge to you for that. We take care of those.
Would, would y'all help us, like, if we had a storm and stuff, like donate?
I did.
We did.
Okay.
Carla reached out, we did offer some help, for sure. Yeah, we're always glad to partner with you and when you have times of need. The water situation that you had, anytime you guys are running short on bottled waters and things like that, if you let us know, we're always going to help you. You just never know what, you never know when things pop up, so you can't, you can't discuss every situation today, but Carla knows and, and all of you would know that if something was to come up and you needed something, always, always reach out. You know, we're, we consider these partnerships.
Something we need a motion on? I might motionally accept this.
Second.
Out of your plan.
Scott, go in favor.
Thank you.
I guess you'll give a contract.
Yeah, we'll be in touch. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Good luck. This is good because you know what's, you know what's coming.
Thank y'all. Thank you. Okay, now we can go back to the ordinance?
Okay. The thing that I would like to see changed is, in, in the past, what we have always done is on commercial or residents who wanted their own container, their own steel container, is, uh, which that would, it would only affect the garden hats and the three yards, is we have always done Republic's cost plus five dollars for maintenance. So instead of putting these rates in here, the, on the commercial service, it would be cost plus five dollars.
I have no problem with that. I think that's good.
Which that is exactly what those are, that, that's in, that's listed in there.
Mm-hmm.
But in order not to have to change it every year, if you just put it in as commercial service, cost plus five dollars, then it would increase.
So take out the whole of this and just put that?
And...
Okay. Elim, basically eliminate that paragraph and...
And do cost plus five dollars. Does that work for me?
Okay, so the trash rate's going to go up to twenty instead of nineteen? Isn't that what we're saying now?
It's twenty now, yeah.
It is twenty now? Okay, I don't remember.
Yeah, we didn't change anything on, we, y'all didn't change anything on, uh, residence, on residential rates, they stay the same.
Okay, so trash isn't going to go up at all?
No.
Okay, okay.
As of now, unless y'all want to increase it.
I think the water's enough.
Yeah.
I think we're good on the, we still got margin in there.
Need a motion?
Yeah.
Scott, second.
I'll second, do the second one.
Go in favor.
Okay, we're voting on the number five on here, right?
Yes.
Yes, the rate ordinance.
Okay, the ordinance, not his, um, we don't have to...
Yeah, the first reading for the...
First reading of the rate ordinance.
Okay.
Okay.
And then number five on here was just for information for him doing that?
No, they all already made the motion on that. Lloyd made it.
I made the motion, we accept this.
Accepted.
Right?
Okay.
Lloyd made the motion and Scott accepted.
Okay.
Then we went back to the...
Then we went back.
Okay.
Property tax rate?
Okay, property tax rate. Our last year's was three five point three five six two two five. This year's no new revenue is three point three four five nine nine eight. It should be, yeah, you should have it.
I didn't have that.
No, one more back. Did that one?
Don't have that one either.
Did I miss yours?
Mm-hmm, I didn't get any of one of these.
Here, pass him this one.
He's got it.
Does he?
Yeah.
No new revenue was point three four five nine nine eight per hundred and voter approval rate is point six five six oh eight six, which means you can't, that's the highest rate you can go without voter approval, without having to, having to go through an election for it. Last year remained no change, kept the rate the same. In light of, of the, all of the requests for streets being repaired?
I think we need to go up.
I think we need to consider going up. Somewhere between that three five six two two five and six five six oh eight six. Our, uh, taxable value last year for twenty twenty-four was forty-nine million seven oh seven four hundred and the, there's so many pages on here. The last page has the, oh, the new evaluation was fifty, fifty-three million oh seven six five thirty.
Where if we can go up without having an election, I think we need to.
Well, if we go a voter approval, that's almost twice what it is. That's too much.
That's almost double.
I think point five, I had those numbers in my head and they're all gone. What county, what all the rates were? Do you know what the county rate is?
I mean, they did the, um, voter approval, but with the county, the voter approval was less than the, um, was less than what we had by some fluke. It was less.
Yeah.
It was not more, so they, they went by the voter approval rate. It doesn't happen but every once in a blue moon, but it happened this time and that's what they did, so...
I was going to say.
It's a little bit lower than what the no new revenue was, if I understood that correctly.
I think that's right.
Yeah, that is, that's crazy.
That's why I'm surprised that this one's almost doubled for the voter approval rate.
It's because we have always stayed as low as we should. We never raised, you know, any...
Yeah, they hadn't either. I mean, they've, they've gone down, but, um...
And if you sold this month, you'll consider the rate. It'll be, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-five nine eight, this month you'll consider the rate, next month you'll approve the rate. Same as a reading, one and two reading.
Is ten percent enough?
Every little bit's going to help.
If we go, if we go in between the two numbers?
Two point five?
I think that'd be good. Next between?
Or just two point five, or you want me to get technical and do the, something like... Probably not. Putting a point in the wrong place. Point five oh one oh four two would be splitting the difference. Five oh one oh four two.
Everybody all right with that?
I am, yes.
Need a motion? Scott, second.
I'll second.
All the favor. Budget review.
I guess I did, uh, to date. Budget analysis. And started working on preliminary numbers and I didn't, I didn't get very far last night, I'm...
Went to Cross and did it?
Uh-huh. Now that we know the trash stuff, I can have more. More, if y'all, y'all want, we have inside the city limits, at current, we're billing five hundred and eighty-five customers. And outside the city limits, this is last month, we billed three hundred and eighty-nine. Five eighty-five inside, three eighty-nine outside.
Do we need to do anything on that?
Do y'all want to set a workshop to work on the budget, or do you want me to put one, compile one and send email it to y'all and then y'all send me your thoughts and...
Um, did, um, when I emailed you, did you get, um, any of the, um, salaries pay, um, rates and all that stuff done?
No, breakdowns, no.
Yes.
I did not. I can tell you about what they all are.
Personally, I think if Carla could get us an outline and we'd go from there. Get us something to work with and then we'll...
You know, even if we have to have another meeting in September to approve like we did last year, we can, we can do that. I'll try, y'all, I'm pulled in eighty-two different directions.
I understand that.
Sometimes I feel like I'm not effective at any of it, 'cause I'm trying to do all of it, so...
But I think if we get too many of us in, in here, it's gonna be chaos.
Yeah, if he is getting...
What do you mean, too many of us in here?
Everybody trying to work on this budget. Everybody throwing different ideas and stuff. I think it'd be better if Carla gets us something, then we can, then we can go back...
Work something, work off of what she's got.
Yeah, then we can, get us an outline, more or less.
And I will try to have that to y'all.
When you get it, okay.
I guess I can, then we can shoot me questions and, you know, where I got the numbers from and, like I said, a budget is guess. It's a best educated guess.
That's all it is.
Communities, Texas Communities Group.
Well, one question on this, is Shayna being paid?
No, at current, no. She is not. You know, she said that may change.
Well, the more she's having to do...
Yeah, 'cause it, you know, she wasn't having to do much of anything, so, and I had not talked to her about it. If she wants to do that, you know, some form of pay this year, or... I need to do that, to see what she wants, but, um...
I mean, I guess it goes back to part of, one of the reasons why we chose her to do all of this, is she said she was volunteering to do it. And that is, that's, that's where I'm going with that, is that if she's volunteering to do it, then there shouldn't be a pay involved. And I know it was in the budget last year, um, whether or not she was paid, that's a different story. It was in the budget.
Yeah, she was, yeah, she was not.
So, um, you know, it's, the six grand that's in there, I don't think should be in there, but that's just my opinion. I don't know what anybody else thinks about it, but, you know, if she's gonna volunteer to do it, then that's not a paid position. That was one of the reasons why we went with her. And not trying to belittle what she does or anything, 'cause I'm not at all. It's just, that's what, that's what we had agreed on and... Okay, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're fine. The substandard properties?
Uh, substandard property, we're gonna have to put that off till October, because one of the properties that, well, the notices were for last Thursday and when that meeting was not able to happen, we had to push them back, 'cause they have to be published again in the newspaper, so... And we have one that there's a possibility we may not be able to get all of the, the notifications in before the September meeting, so instead of having one in, or two in September and one in October, one of the ladies that would be in the September meeting that was supposed to be in this one, she has a possible buyer for a property, so that would give her another couple of months to try to make that happen. And she was also find, trying to find somebody just to get the weeds knocked down where it's not such a fire hazard. But one of the properties, the one that we had to move it back for was one that said he was gonna take care of tearing it down on his own and he didn't, he hasn't done anything, so we're gonna go ahead and go forward with evatements on him also.
Roby Avenue?
Okay, there's an estimate in there for...
Hundred thousand.
Roby Avenue.
I'm looking for it.
I've got it somewhere. Just saw it. And that was, uh, also to go back to, uh, some of those that are, are caverned, you know, some of the worst ones downtown. Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's in here somewhere.
It's in here, well, now you gotta double one, but, yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
And we're not going blind.
Yeah, which, uh, the labor is six thousand and I can see if I can get the road base, you know, the base less expensive, uh, I don't know. He's all, it, it kinda depends on the day.
Can I basically tell them? What kind of base?
The good, the state grade.
When Dexter and somebody else can get so many loads for a thousand dollars, so, hear a while back and talk about it? Does it ring?
No, we've already paid for eighteen loads of, just don't throw in on there.
Oh, I thought they were gonna put down...
Washed right back out.
Just cut road base.
There was a...
So it's just to grade it and put the base on the top of it?
Yes.
Basically what we're doing.
In part, well, this will be road base not, this will be state grade road ba, road base not.
The sand gravel?
Yes.
Cleat you made.
No bargeage, no nothing. He'll clean it up?
Yeah, he's gonna pull the, he'll grade all the roads.
Yeah, they have to have the ditch, that way it keep the...
Yeah, he'll pull it back in, you know, pull all of that back in.
Start from where it ended.
Yeah.
The football field, or track field down to where town ends.
From, so that would be from the, the north...
Ninety-two to...
Oh, ninety, all the way down?
Yeah. Go and rework those and get...
On the Joyce Dentis? How far you going?
No, to Second Street, yeah.
Oh, just to Fourth Street?
Fourth, yeah. 'Cause Third and Second don't come on out to Roby, do they?
No.
Do they?
Third do.
Third don't. Third or Fourth, I mean, Fourth do.
Fourth does.
Yeah.
The Fourth does, 'cause Joyce Dentis is right behind that. Right behind Fourth.
Okay.
Okay, are you gonna look and see if you can get the, um, the base?
I will, the, the, it was not much difference. The last one we got was a little difference. And that's the sad thing about getting the road base and all of that, any kind of material you have hauled in, it's not the material cost, it's the dang trucking.
Yes.
Right, right.
Crazy expensive.
Okay.
So what are they gonna do down there where it gets old? I mean, are they just gonna nip where it gets narrowed down and...
No, he said he would widen it back out.
You know, 'cause there's some of that stuff down there.
Yeah, some of it has gotten narrow down to one lane.
Yeah.
And, yeah.
Some of the dumpsters are out near the street.
Mm-hmm.
Did you ever call the state about the culvert there? Between the intersection?
They came and, they told me, they came and did it.
Haven't been done. Yeah, they grew it up pretty quick.
Yeah, they did. I don't think they ever did clean it out that pretty cool.
From up to the roof?
I'll call him again.
The road base, you talking about the white rock or the crust of asphalt?
Yeah, no, it's like, no, it's the white rock. It's like they put out here, the base they put out here before they put the, that the company, the oil company...
Before they put the blacktop on top of the... What they did, the edges of the road with it.
It's the good cleaty stuff.
Yeah.
Paxton.
I think with everything that, everything else that is going on and all of that, I think that we should just let them do it. That takes part of it off of you and having to make phone calls, getting a quote, and they can go ahead and start working on it, get this approved and go ahead and let them start working on it. That way, we don't have to worry about it and it takes something off of your plate too, on all of this, um, 'cause it can't be that much less for us to get a quote or whatever, so...
Yeah, the, the last few loads...
Not for the material.
Yeah. The last few loads of material were five something, you know, so it's not gonna be much.
Well, and then you're gonna have a different company trying to, trying to...
Coordinate?
Coordinate with this guys of when they need it, when just let them do it all.
Yeah, yeah, just, I think, I think it would be better use of your time and everything else, it takes, it basically takes you out of all that, just let them do it. And they can do it on their schedule when they need it done. So...
Yeah.
I make a motion to do it for this.
Second, Scott, all the favor.
That one's everybody?
Yes.
You sure you don't hit other little rooms?
Yeah, some of the, the deeper rutted ones, you know, like behind on Seventh Street where, and I know there's government apartments here in John, where John Morgan lived, there's one that's like very deep.
It's not too good deep.
Yeah.
Yeah, Genevieve.
Yeah.
They're gonna fix all that?
He said he would come and he would do those, some of those, hit some of those worst ones while he was here and, while he has his equipment here.
Oh, that's off of Roby, yeah, that's a, a different area?
Yeah.
Okay.
Different area.
Food truck fees, they'll tell electricity.
Okay, food truck fees, we had talked about, um, I'd visited with Rory about it and a couple of the vendors that come and, uh, they said they generally spend more than ten dollars on fuel just to run their generators, so they, we had talked about the ten dollar, having a ten dollar per, uh, current, yeah, every time they come to, to, uh, run the, instead of running a generator to plug in to the electricity.
They're usually here about three hours, give or take, from eleven to two is basically where they're here. So, I mean, that would, more than pay for...
There's a lot of in the afternoons lately.
Yeah.
What, do what?
There's some in the afternoons also.
Yeah, some of the, like, the ones that do the snow, the drink, the snow cone, the, that type, they come in the evening also. I haven't seen any food, food trucks.
Yeah, but they're not really here, uh, well, Artis has been here, I've seen them down there, but, um, that's only 'cause I come home to lunch, but, um, I mean, they're typically not sitting out there for more than like three hours or four hours or something like that.
They're not sitting there all night.
And I think ten bucks is enough to cover...
It is, yeah.
Because, since you say it's per occurrence, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I think so.
Well, I'll make a motion, um, ten bucks, um, per visit.
Second, Scott, all the favor. T. Amoreus, raised to eight percent.
Okay, that is on our retirement, that just gives us, uh, from five percent, right now, five percent is withheld from our checks. It doesn't change anything that city pays, but the five percent is held and that gives us the ability to go to eight percent. Just gives us a little bit more retirement when we get ready to retire.
So you're raising to eight percent of what's gonna come out of your check?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. What is the current, um, city match?
It fluctuates, right now it's point three four percent. That fluctuates depending on who cashed out during the year, you know, it changes a little bit every year. Not much, but it does change.
I make a motion, I'll prove it then.
I'll second that one.
All the favor. Company's plan and zoning ordinance grant.
Okay, um, West Cog, West Central Texas Council of Governments is, um, is doing, this is all through them, no cost to us, um, so, just, just kind of letting y'all know what's, what's going on with that. Just, just kind of letting y'all know what's, what's going on with that.
What is it? What is it grant for?
The comprehensive plan. And then zoning. It's both of those. Uh, there's the
Mistake, I don't know what.
There's the MOU of those, comprehensive plan is, is just kind of tells you what you've got. We had one and it's a park plan or planning grant back in twelve, I believe. Never, never turn down free money.
That's kind of what I was thinking.
So this is just to be able to work with them?
Yeah, that's the agreement, to work with them. But they're gonna do all of, they cover all the costs. They've got the grant, but they offer it to municipalities to do the comprehensive plan. That means they do it and I don't have to. All we gotta do is sign.
Okay, so all we're approved is just to do the MOU? That's all we're approved of?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Okay, I, I just wasn't clear on what this, what this was. I didn't know. So, and that being said, um, I think COG isn't, because part of what they brought up, and I didn't want to say anything with everybody in here, I think COG is working on, um, a notification system thing that would benefit both county, municipal, cities, our schools and all of that type of thing. I think they're working on something like that too.
Yes.
Which
I believe you're right, but I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna overstep and say something that wasn't gonna come to fruition.
Right, and I know, they're in the, they're in the process of working on all of that. And, um, I don't know where they are in it or anything like that, so. It may be something that, you know, we can do through them on all of this, but.
So, motion to pass that.
Yes, I make a motion.
Scott, all in favor? Administrative.
Okay, auditors were here yesterday. He will present the audit report in the September meeting. Everything went well. Tower renovation, as I mentioned earlier, they will be here Monday. They will start with the DPNR stand pipe. And after they get that done, they'll move on to the North Tower. And when that one's done, they'll move on to the South Tower. They're, they're saving the South Tower till last because it's the one with containment. So. And then Caleb Messick, uh, you know, they're putting the little restaurant down here. He has asked if y'all would bless him redoing the sidewalk and putting in a wheelchair ramp.
Is that us or is that the state?
That's us.
Are we paying for it or do they pay for it?
No, he's paying for it. He's doing it.
He's paying for it? Well, I mean, he's got to have ADA access and everything to it, so. If they wanna do it, let him do it.
That's what I said. All right, I will tell him to carry on.
It'll have to meet KDA, right? It'll have to meet KDA rules specs.
Why wouldn't he?
Man, it'll have to.
Yeah. It'll have to meet their specifications.
It'll have to.
No, I, okay, the ramp will have to meet the specifications. Yes, yes.
It's by the road.
Yes. A certain grade and everything else and all this other kind of stuff like that, yeah. I'm sorry, Frank, it just.
Motion to adjourn.
I'd like to say something before. I, I'd like to thank y'all for, the city for giving my mom a plant for her funeral. She passed away last month. And it's real pretty and nice. I appreciate it. Now I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Pretty forcey, right?
Yes.